It is none other of our Vice President of Education. She is a talented young woman and she also a flower crafter. Uh, she has a flower bouquet shop, right? And I saw some of her work and the flower is exquisite. So plus, please help me welcome our Toastmasters of the meeting today, Toastmaster Lisa Octavia.
Well, thank you very much, our President, for your amazing introduction about me. So ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lisa Octavia and today I'm going to be your Tom, or you can call me as the emcee of this event. And first, I would like to share my screen, so please host, can you enable me to share the screen? Please, I would like to share the agenda, like the overview, what we are going to do today in this meeting. So... Okay, alright, first of all, probably I need to introduce a little bit about Toastmasters first, since we have a guest here. So basically, Toastmasters is a nonprofit organization internationally, and you can even find Toastmasters anywhere in this world. Well, basically, our main objective is we would like to expand and also to train public and also especially our members to have better communication and also leadership skills. Alright, since I can share the screen now, let me just share it to you. Okay, can you see the screen now, everybody? Okay, is it alright? Alright, so as you know, our theme for today is the Wizard of Words. You might be wondering, what is the Wizard of Words? Well, basically, because we are going to have an amazing educational session today about how we utilize words and beautiful words into our speech and cast a spell on our audience, that's why we choose this theme for today. And I would like to say, welcome to Surabaya Heroes Regular Meeting on 7th of February 2021. Are you ready for this meeting? I'm really excited. Well, I'm actually really glad to see all of you here, since it's Sunday, it's actually a lazy day, but you're here with us to be more productive. Well, so, this is the overview what we are going to have today. So first, we are, we are going to have table topic session. This session is basically a one to two minutes impromptu session where the guests and also member can deliver their impromptu speeches. Why do we have this session? It is to sharpen critical thinking and also communication skill. And don't forget, we have Word of the Day, it's exquisite, so we need to use the Word of the Day, especially in this session. The second session is going to be the prepared speech session, and this session is exclusively for Toastmasters members and it's based on their projects. So if you feel like you want to deliver a prepared speech and expand your communication skill, do contact us and join as a member. And thirdly, we are going to have the most special session today, which is the educational session. It's going to be led by our amazing speaker and I'll introduce you to this amazing person later on. Well, basically, the title is Speaking with Grace. Grace is not the name of the person, you know? It's actually how you can speak elegantly and how to incorporate those beautiful words to convey more effective message. And it could also be as a packaging for a speech and to attract or to cast a spell on the audience. And last but not least, we'll be having evaluation session later on. And we'll, because Toastmasters is basically open for room for improvement, so we do have speech and general evaluation later on. And of course, this session later on will be held by my fellow role-taker. He is the general evaluator, so later on he will also introduce his team. And our general evaluator resembles Harry Potter, because our theme is wizard, right? So we have this, you know, I tried to find a resemblance between Harry Potter and our general evaluator. Basically, they both wear glasses and they have this initiative and bravery to keep learning. So I would say that both of them are eager to learn something new and open for new opportunities. So let us welcome our general evaluator, Toastmasters Jeffrey Potter.
Okay, thank you to Tom, Toastmaster Lisa. Basically, I, I, uh, joined my class for today's meeting. And hello everyone, good afternoon, welcome to Surabaya Heroes Toastmasters. And today, I'll be the general evaluator and my job is to review and evaluate whole meeting from the very beginning until the end of the meeting. It's also my job to highlight, uh, how members have performed in their roles and including preparation, organization, timelines, and also carrying out the duties themselves. So, uh, for the specific area to be evaluated, I will call the Heroes Team, the Team of Evaluation today. And for the first, I will call the Miss Grammarian, Toastmaster Dini. Toastmaster Dini, please explain your role to other participants, stage is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone, so my duty today is as a grammarian. As the grammarian, I will take note on any grammatical error or mistake. But I believe all the speakers today are a good speaker. No worries to make, make any mistake, because we all learn here today. And I want to, uh, I want to encourage you to use our word of the day, which is exquisite. Okay, exquisite as the adjective means very beautiful. Remember, use word of the day exquisite in your presentation later on. Thank you, and back to our general evaluator.
Okay, thank you, Miss Grammarian. So please, everyone, remember to use our word of the day while speaking, which is exquisite. And for the next, uh, I will call the Accountant, Toastmaster Junita. Toastmaster Junita from Cendana Toastmasters Club, so Toastmaster Junita, time is yours.
Oh, okay, thank you, our GE. Hi all, my name is Junita. And today, I will become your Accountant. As Accountant, I will take a note of, uh, for some unnecessary, unnecessary words like ah, um, um, or, or some repetition word like so-so, well-well, and etc. That's all from me, I will give back to our GE, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Junita. And the next is the Timer, Toastmaster Nir Mala from Polonia Toastmasters.
Thank you very much for the introduction, GE. As mentioned by our general evaluator, my name is Nir Mala from Polonia Toastmasters Club in Medan, and I will serve as your timer for today's meeting. Delivering your message concisely within the given time is one of the attributes of a good speaker. To help to facilitate this, I'll be tracking the time taken by each speaker and evaluator. When I show the green traffic light, it means that you have met the minimum time requirements. When I show the yellow traffic light, you're at a halfway point within the minimum and maximum time. And when you see the red traffic light, you have reached the maximum time and you should wrap up your speech within the next thirty seconds. For example, table topic speakers will have one to two minutes of speaking time. I'll show the green traffic light at one minute, the yellow traffic light at one minute thirty second, and the red traffic light at two minutes after which you have thirty seconds to wrap up your speech. I look forward to all the speeches, thank you, back to GE.
Okay, thank you, the timer, so please, everyone, when you are speaking, uh, don't forget to pin the timer, because we have a timer today. And for the next, the last role-taker, the Bell Counter, Toastmaster Kiro. Toastmaster Kiro, is your time.
Uh, thank you, GE, for introducing me. Overall, the Bell Counter is, um, the, I'm going to castle ball when, uh, for you to decide who is the best speaker, uh, that going to, uh, present in today's meeting. So that's it, over to you, GE.
Okay, thank you, so this all for my team introduction, so I will, uh, keep control back to Tom and I will back to the end of the meeting, so thank you, back to Tom.
Alright, thank you very much to our general evaluator for such amazing introduction and also the teams. So, I mean, the team with those detailed explanation about your roles. Well, next up, we are going to the very first session for today's meeting. It is a table topic session. I bet this session is very exciting, because you are able to deliver one to two minute speech based on the topic given at that time, it's gonna be very thrilling and exciting at the same time. Well, and this session is not going to be led by me, because you might be bored if you keep seeing me on screen. So this is going to be led by an amazing lady who actually resembled Hermione Granger. If you have watched Harry Potter, you'll know that she is a very smart person, human being, although she is not, um, a magician, but she can, she can be as smart as them or maybe more than, smarter than them. So I would like to invite a lady who is just as smart as our Hermione Granger here. She is, also has this generosity to keep sharing her knowledge to other people. So let us welcome Toastmasters Suryani. Thank you very much to our Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Lisa. Such a very heartwarming introduction, wow, I feel honored right now. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to start our table topic session. I believe that this session is a nerve-wracking session, at the same time also such a very heartwarming session. Table topic master, are you there?
Uh, Lisa, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, that's perfect, alright, let's go on. Toastmasters Suryani, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, can you guys hear me?
Alright, yeah, it was lagging previously, but it's fine now, so we can just go on with the session then.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry for that, so can, can I get the host to enable me to share the screen, please? Can I get the host to enable me to share the screen? Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry. Alright, so, yeah, ladies and gentlemen, in this session, I'm going to pick one person to be the speaker later and you are going to be given time for one minute until two to deliver your impromptu speaking skill. And please remember to use our word of the day for today's meeting is about exquisite. So I'm going to pick one person, this person is the very first speaker, I'm going to pick, I think, Kiro.
Alright, thank you.
Well, you're good. Okay, here's your question, I mean, there for you, Kiro. Toastmaster Kiro, your time is one to two minutes with, uh... I'm sorry, with the word of the day. Okay, I think with the word of the day exquisite, yes, Kiro, have your time.
Well, I believe that anything happen in life comes for a reason. Whether it is love, whether it is, oh, study or meeting person, anyone, meeting friends or meeting relatives, meeting colleagues, new networks, there is a reason behind it and, and, and so, so does love. And whether it is something good or something bad, we just try to find a reason why it happens to us, it happens in our life, because as you all, as you all, all, all heard that, there's always a silver lining behind, uh, behind a cloud. When I look back, uh, to, to my, uh, bad experience in life or good experience in life, especially when dealing with love, this is something that I'm not really good at, but I'm trying to find a reason why it happens to me, that probably sometimes that this thing is, that God think that I'm not ready for these things, uh, for, for love, or God wants me to, to do something else, something great, something greater than just, uh, meeting someone that I love or meeting the, the right person for me. So by, by doing that, by thinking that way, I, I will see that my life positively, I'm not depressed or I'm not going to, uh, blaming everyone that my life is going this way or my life is going that way. Because life is a matter of our decision and we decide what our life is and we decide how we feel, how we react upon our, upon things that happen in our life. By taking ownership or taking responsibility in our life, we will see, we will try to find solutions, we will try to find, uh, we will try to, to be creative in finding solution over our problems, over things that happen in our life, rather than just blaming things, rather than just, uh... uh, rather than just giving up upon the things that happen in life. And so does love, so does in everything that happens in our life, because things that happen in our life happens for a reason, over to you.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Kiro. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, failed Toastmaster, I also believe that everything happening in our life happened for a reason. And yes, Kiro, yay, thank you very much. Well, does any one of you guys would like to be the volunteer to be a speaker? If not, then I would just speak by myself. Nobody? Alright, as usual. Well, I just speak, um... I guess, uh... Bahariadi?
Well, okay.
Yeah, alright, there you go.
What's the question?
Yep, I'm going to... Yeah, I'm sorry, it's not supposed to be, I'm sorry, sorry. Yeah, uh, there we go, what emotion do you feel when you watch a sunrise or sunset? Yes, Bahariadi, your time is one to two minutes with the word of the day exquisite.
Okay, am I audible?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Can you show me the question again?
Uh, yeah, sure, sorry for that, yeah. There you go.
What emotion do I feel when I watch a sunrise or a sunset? First, I was amazed and grateful, because God has created such amazing creature called universe. It is created for us. We know that sunshine's benefit not only for human, but also for other creatures, whether they're animal or plant. Can you imagine life without sunshine? That's the first. Second, we can see sunrise and also sunset as a symbol. Sunrise means that everything that we have in life have started and we start should start everything as brightly as possible. Yes, we, we may have some difficulties, some challenges. Like, for example, when I start my work, it's so difficult for the time. I have to do this, I have to do that, I have to wake up in the morning and I have to eat breakfast earlier, that's a struggle. Because before that, I used to sleep until quite, until at seven or eight. But at the end of the day, it was a beautiful day, because I get something result. Not only money, but also learning, friend, network, and something else. Just like in Toastmasters, maybe some of us feel reluctant to join Toastmasters. Oh, it's Sunday afternoon, I suppose to get take, take a nap. Then, by, I decided, I want to learn new something. To, then I went to Surabaya Heroes Toastmasters and met you all the amazing people. And all, at that time, I believe that by that, at, sometimes I will enjoy the result. I will enjoy the moment, that's because the sunrise, both sunrise and sunshines are beautiful. Thank you very much.
Hello?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Um... Am I audible, everyone?
Uh, yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
I'm sorry, I thought my internet connection. Yes, so Bahariadi mentioned that when I, when he watch for a sunset or sunrise, he will feel very, very grateful. Yeah, thank you very much for sharing your thought. We are now going to continue to turn speaker. May I invite Titin?
Yes, Shilla, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, gosh. Oh, I'm so messed up, sorry, sorry. Yeah. This is for you? Toastmaster Titin? Yes? Are you ready with it?
Suryani, I'm sorry, I think your screen is still blank. Can you probably cancel the share, sharing and try it again?
Oh, sure. Can everybody see?
Yes, that's perfect.
Yeah, I was there in your forgetting until I was forgotten. Yeah, yes, until everything, yes. Okay, thank you, yes, I get it already. So thank you for this, thank you for this question. Uh, I believe that in our life, we have to let go and we should not attach too much uh, whether to our, maybe our possession, our wealth, or even our family members whom we love very much. Because one day, we will let go of all of them, of all of the possession that we have gathered, uh, we have strive, uh, to gather them and to our family members also whom we love very much. And one day, we should let them go. Um, like for our children, what comes to my mind is for our children. So one day, I will leave them, then I will be forgotten. Okay, because, yeah, they will have their own things to do and... Until that time come, then I think I should leave a good memory for them. Okay, if I may call it a legacy, at least to my children, something good that they can be, um... proud of, because I am their mother. Like a small thing, the kindness that I can give to them, I can inspire to them. And some discipline, maybe, or other good things that I can give to them, so they can be independent in their life. Yes, that's what comes to my mind when talking about forgotten and letting go. So thank you for this inspirational question. I hope that I can make good use of my time, the rest of my time in my life, so I can give some good memories for my children and they can absolutely learn something good from me. So thank you and back to you.
Thank you very much, Titin, I do agree with what you have mentioned just now to us, what you have shared to us. Yes, we shouldn't be so attached with something, because one day we are going to leave all of them behind us as well. Yeah, I think I will just need one more speaker to wrap up our session. Does any one of you guys would like to be the volunteer to be the speaker? Or I'll just pick? I think I'll just choose, um, Megan? You're good, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, there we go, I'll just share this. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you for the time, uh, I think... Audible, right?
Yeah, yeah, you are.
Alright, thank you. So this is what I'm feeling in this past three or two months. Uh, I feel like my schedule has been a lot of things, like especially in teaching, uh, in online teaching and also in offline teaching, they have different dynamics. And, uh, sometime I'm feeling anxious, because, uh, is it, is it the right time for me to do this? Is when is the time to do everything and it feels like I don't do anything? So, uh, one day, my friend shared to me that she bought a planner and I think this is it, this is a new year and I should, I think I need to give a, give a present to myself, give a gift to myself that I need to buy this journal. So I start journaling this year and this is the journal that I do. And probably you might not see it, but, uh, I make quotes for my journal. It's a journey of a thousand miles, start with a single step. So in order to, to fight my anxiety and to fight my anxious feelings that I don't do enough, I plan, even I plan the recreational plan. For example, today I'm going to take a walk and do nothing. I'll, I will write down for that and I feel happy, because it's like I accomplished something, but I do nothing at the same time, because it's a part of a plan. Um, so if you're feeling the same way as I am feeling anxious for not following plans, for not doing anything, for, for bad things, you might start journaling, because it's really terrific, thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan. Yes, I do believe as well, because I, I also use this journaling to help me as well whenever the anxiety attack me, most of the time, and most of the time it helped me. Yep, we have done our, uh, table topic session. There is one poet, poetry from poet that is Sarah King, she is my favorite poet. She say that, "When lives arrive, make yourself comfortable. And when lives say goodbye, just turn off the light and say goodbye as well." So ladies and gentlemen, I always believe that, just like what our friend mentioned, yes, whatever happen, it is what it is, lesson learned. Back to you, Toastmaster Lisa.
Well, thank you very much to our table topic master, Toastmasters Suryani. Like what I said earlier, she's just like our Hermione Granger. She's so smart in giving these beautiful questions that can trigger heartwarming and inspiring speeches from all of the table topic speakers as well. And worry not, we are going to learn more on how to cast a spell to the audience later during the educational session. Well, before that, we'll have our second session, which is the prepared speech session. This speech, uh, we only have, for this session, we only have one speaker. He is basically our new member, he just joined last month and he's going to deliver his... He is basically our new member. He just joined last month and he's going to deliver his very first speech. But the details of his speech will be basically informed by our evaluator. So I would like to info, I would, I would like to invite our evaluator, Toastmasters Zahara, to introduce the speaker.
Okay, uh, am I audible? Uh, okay, am I audible? Okay, so. So today, this time, we'll, we will have the honor to listen to the very first speech of Toastmaster Michael. Yeah, so uh, Michael, uh, who is the, one of the newest member of Heroes. Is going to do his ice breaking project. Level one project two, persuasive influence. And the title of his speech is Beta Foundation. So uh, without further ado, my fellow Toastmaster, now give it up to Toastmaster Michael, Beta Foundation. It's my Toastmaster Michael, time is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Zahara. Uh, have you ever tried to log into an application on games? And you can't because it's under maintenance and new version is coming, better point one, better point two, and so on. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Lau. And ever since I was a little boy, I have always have a huge love for art, language and music. So after I graduated high school at eighteen, I decided to go to Shanghai and study. I had all my life planned out, I was gonna go to this amazing art school. I was gonna go master the language and I was gonna be presented with a lot of great opportunities in China. However, a year later, I had something terrible uh, happen in my life. So my father had fallen terribly ill. So I had to go back to my hometown and everything in a blink of a moment, everything falls apart. It's like all my life or everything that I have uh, planned out, uh, need to be refigured out, restarted. After that, uh, my mom uh, encouraged me to go to Ruffless Design Institute and enroll in interior design major. Fast forward nine years, I'm currently working as an interior designer. And I ha, I am blessed with a lot of uh, wonderful projects, spendings all over Indonesia. From Surabaya, Jakarta, Bali, Medan and Lampung. This job has given me a lot of uh, great opportunities to work with great people. And here it has given me the opportunity to be able to help people build their beautiful home. And I got also the great opportunity to uh, share my passion, to play with colors, to play with exquisite materials and uh, just designing things that I really like. And because of this job, I'm also have given the chance to be a speaker at uh, Sharp's Lifestyle Event last year at Supermarket Pakuan. At first, I thought it was just gonna be another, like another client meet, uh, presentation meeting. So it was just gonna be me showing some pictures and then put a good word here and there. And then blah, 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 and then wrap it up. And when I was up there on stage, I totally freeze. I completely blanked and I don't know what I have to say. At that time, I felt very embarrassed. And when the host was asking me a lot of question, all I do, all I did was give a yes or a no answer. And if there was one thing in life that has taught me is in this past twenty-seven years, is I need to put myself back in that uncomfortable, uh, hard pounding situation all over again in order to learn and grow. And therefore, I decided to join Toastmaster International. Eventually, I think that everyone here is on a better version of themselves. Just like me right now, is currently under maintenance or bug fixes. Are having bug fixes here and there through the ups and downs and life and difficulties of life. Just like the maintenance that I'm going through today, giving my scary very first icebreaker speech. I'm hoping that there's gonna be a new better version of me that's gonna be a little bit more confident, a little bit better at public speaking. Finally, I'd like to close by saying that my mission in life is to keep on growing and learning and be the best version of myself. And hopefully, in that version of myself, I'm gonna be able to help others uh, be the best version of themselves. Thank you. Back to Toastmaster Zahara.
Wow, thank you very much for such inspiring speech today. And who can believe that it's actually his first time delivering prepared speech? It was really amazing. And I think we have a lot of things in common. I do love art, language and music as well. And I do believe that when we put ourselves outside the comfort zone, that's the only way we can change and move forward. Well, change is not comfortable, but that's the only way we can move forward and grow as a person. Thank you very much for reminding that beautiful message to all of the audience today, Michael. And congratulations for completing your ice breaking speech. Alright.
Thank you.
Yes, alright, for the next session, this is the most awaited session, the highlight of this meeting today. Well, first of all, I would like to introduce our speaker today. If I would like to, you know, make a resemblance with someone in Harry Potter, I will definitely think that he is just like our professor Dumbledore. And plus, if you actually see our, you know, the advertisement that we put his face and his photo. Dumbledore has a bird, phoenix bird. And then our speaker today has the magical creature, which is a cat as well. And I would say that this speaker is really amazing. First of all, he is very dedicated, just like our prof, professor Dumbledore in Harry Potter. He has been in Toastmaster for thirteen years. He is also a national debating champion and District Eighty-Seven Second Runner-Up Table Topic and Evaluation Contest. So ladies and gentlemen, let us welcome Toastmasters Chandra Adiputra.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can see my PowerPoint?
Yes, perfect.
So you cannot see me, which is good.
We can see you. No, no worries.
No worries. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to my presentation, Speaking with Grace by Chandra Adiputra, Toastmasters. At the, up, sorry, oh my goodness. Okay, a little bit about myself. Uh, I need to introduce myself. I'm the most senior active member in the oldest club in Bali. But I'm never a DTM because I'm so lazy. And I, I think I am the member with most contest appearances in all discipline, international humorous evaluation and table topic. But I never won anything. So even in international speech, say, um, contest, I think the best I've ever beat is runner-up in division. Which considering I've been joining the contest for a decade, is a very fantastic accomplishment. But two years ago, I helped writing a speech for Natalie and happened to be she won. According to David, is like the most competitive division contest ever was. And was like, oh, she won. And then I realized that sadly or goodly, whatever, apparently I'm a better writer than a better speaker. So, okay, that's about me. Alright, and this is a concept that I will share to you today is speaking is grace, speaking with grace. What is it? Is speaking beautifully, like romantic song lyrics, some famous speech or a line in the Hollywood movies. If you see a movies, usually the quoteable part is often only in the last part or somewhere in the middle. So when I share this concept, not necessarily your whole speech need to be graceful, only part of it. So it's like an MSG, makes your speech so much uh, more tasty. Like if you are eating indomie, if you left the MSG out, you will not like it. Okay, this is an example of what I meant by speaking with grace.
I understand. You eat when you are upset.
Yeah, I'm not upset. Why? Sorry. My bad, my bad.
I understand. You eat when you are upset.
Yeah, I'm not upset. Why?
So why are you upset?
I probably sucked more today than anyone in the history of Kung Fu, in the history of China, in the history of sucking.
Probably.
And the five. Man, you should have seen them. They totally hate me.
Totally.
How's Shifu ever gonna turn me into the dragon warrior? I mean, I'm not like the five. I've got no claws, no wings, no venom. Even Mantis has those thingies. Maybe I should just quit and go back to making noodles.
Quit, don't quit, noodles, don't noodles. You are too concerned with what was and what will be is a saying. Yesterday is history, tomorrow is a mystery, but today is a gift. That is why it is called present.
So you know this scene? Anybody of you watch Kung Fu Panda?
Yes.
Nice to hear that. So see that scene where Master Uwe Talpo? That is what I call speaking with grace. And if you know shortly later, he died. So Master Uwe doesn't appear in the movie all the time. It's not a speech, it's a movie, but they are part of it that is very beautiful. Very beautifully said. Why would you speak with grace? Why we just like speak with no grace? Simply put, because it is the only method that make your speech memorable. Trust me. For instance, this is like fifteen percent of the original transcript of the most famous speech of the last century. I Have A Dream by Martin Luther King. And it surprised me that many member in Toastmasters haven't actually read the full version of it. The full version of it is seventeen minutes long. And all we remember is, "I have a dream." Nobody remember how he say it. Is it powerful? Is he funny? No one remembers like what kind of suit did he wear. No one remember his body gesture, his vocal variety. What people remember is that only line. "I have a dream that one day my four children will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the virtue of their character." So ladies and gentlemen, if you want to make your speech memorable through the ages, years and years and years to come, you have to be able to speak with grace. Now, how can we speak with grace? There's only one answer. Number one is research. Number two is research. Number three is also research. So this is something that I, earlier I talked with Lisa, this is what she've done. Watching lots of movies, reading lots of books. You will never be a good speaker without being a good writer. There is a cap. There is a limit of how much can be impromptu speaking can be good. Sooner or later, if you really want to be a great speaker, you have to be able to write. So start writing your speech. How to be able to be a great writer? You have to be a good reader. You cannot invent everything. It is much easier to steal it from somewhere from the internet. Somebody up there have made it for you. Watch it, read it, learn it, adapt it, and use it. So I repeat once again, you'll never be a good speaker without being a good writer. You'll never be a good writer before you are a good reader. These are some of the examples of how I can use materials from the internet, from the concept. And this is like some simple tips. There are many ways to speak with grace. Today I can only share three. Simple principle number one, repetition. Very simple. Repeat it over and over. Because human mind works by reinforcement. If you say something over and over, it will stuck in your brain. But there is a method of how to say it in an elegant way. And for me, the best speaker that can be able to use this principle is British ex-prime minister Winston Churchill. In his famous speech, We Shall Fight. So in this clip, you know Batman? The butler of Batman? This is the same actor. So in this movie, he won the Oscar. Gary Oldman. Alright, I have to forward and then I have to stop thirty seconds because of time restriction. Let's go, let's check it out.
To the question of invasion, I would observe that there has never been a period in all these long centuries in which we passed when an absolute guarantee against invasion could have been given to our people. But I have myself full confidence that if all do their duty, if nothing is neglected and the best arrangements are made as they are being made, we shall prove ourselves once more able to defend our island home and ride up the storm of war and to outlive the menace of tyranny, if necessary, for years, if necessary, alone. And anyway, that is what we are again trying to do. That is the result of his Majesty's government giving their that is the will of Parliament and the nation. The British Empire and the Czech Republic linked together in their cause and in their league would defend through the day their native soil. Even if I had a good comrades to the utmost of their strength. Even though large texts of Europe and many old and famous states have fallen or may fall into the grip of the Gestapo and all the only separators are the Nazi rule. We shall not flag or fail. We shall go on till the end. We shall fight in France. We shall fight on the seas and oceans. We shall fight with growing confidence and growing strength in the air. We shall defend our island whatever the cost may be. We shall fight on the beaches. We shall fight on the landing grounds. We shall fight in the fields and in the streets. We shall fight in the hills. We shall never surrender.
Alright, that's the clip. So do you realize how he used the power of repetition to really reinforce the message? Now let's try to use it in our speech. Give me a topic. Can someone unmute anyone? Participant? Hello, can someone say something, please?
Probably a topic about failure.
Failure. Ladies and gentlemen, often we fail many times. Often we fail alone. Often we fail when we are at the beach or on the hill by the sea or by the top of the mountain. Often we fail. But what we have to do is to carry our doubts and we shall fight till the end. You get the idea. You get inspiration from the movie, you get the principle, you can pretty much copy paste it. Change some of the words and use it in the speech. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the speech that being used by Prime Minister of Great Britain when he faced Hitler. This speech cannot go too wrong. So that's how. This is the power of repetition and the power of research. This is tips number two. Vivid words. Often is the case when we describe something, we describe it in way too simplistic. Oh yeah, I love Silver Queen. Chocolate, tasty. If you cannot picture it to the audience, it is meaningless. A speech is only one dimensional method. They can't, two dimensional. They can see you, they can hear you. But you have to be able to make their mind run in a three dimensional way. They have to be able to vividly imagine it. I have another clip to share this principle. And this is what we got from our fans earlier about Martin Luther King. This is his very famous speech, I Have A Dream.
I have a dream. One day this nation will rise up live out the true meaning of its creed. We hope these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day on the red hills of Georgia sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will they be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream. One day even the state of Mississippi, a state sweltering with the people's injustice sweltering with the heat of oppression be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream. My four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day down in Alabama with its vicious racism with its governor having his lips dripping with the words of imposition and nullification. One day right now in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls as sisters and brothers. I have a dream today.
So what do you think about the speech? Did you see how he used the word to paint in your mind about the situation? In the red hills of Alabama, in the mighty mountains of New York. "I have a dream that my little kids can hold hands." So put more objective, so you can make vivid pictures in the audience's mind. Once again, we will have the same. I'll try to give another example of how to use this principle in your speech. Can please someone give me a topic? Lisa, can you do what you've done earlier? Someone? Hello?
Okay, a topic about passion.
Passion.
Yes, or ambition.
About passion or ambition? I have a passion that one day I will conquer all the mighty mountains. I will go to the very top. I will see the beautiful green trees and the blue oceans and the blue sky. I have the ambition to be the number one interior designer in Indonesia. This very doll architecture will be changed in my hand. There will be no more old scriptures from the ages of long ago, but there will be more beautiful words, more beautiful sculptures and beautiful paintings that will define the age to come. I have a dream and I will make it come true. So that is how compared to say, oh yeah, I want to, I have the ambition to be the best. And then you start to be you start to repeat yourself. I want to be the best. I'll be the greatest. I'll be on top of everything and on top of everyone. So play with more words. So I hope this is gonna be helpful for you. And move on to my last tips. And simple principle number three is poetic words. At times, if you use everyday words, it's a bit boring. It's a bit linear. So at times, it's nice to play it with some other words. This is gonna be the last clip for today. It's gonna be from one of my favorite sitcom. And I hope you've watched it before. How I Met Your Mother. Da 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 da.
Excuse me. Oh, hey, it's you. Yeah, okay. I'm not sure what kind of vibe I was giving off before, but I am not interested in your schnitzel.
No, 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 God, no. I just have one quick question. Victoria seems like a great girl. Why wouldn't you wanna marry her?
Victoria is wunderbar. I'm sorry. Wunderbar is a German word for one.
Yeah, no.
Oh, it's for German. She spoke in Deutsch. Ich habe keine Freunde, die Deutsch sprechen in den Amerika. Sie nicht machen so einsam.
No, 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 I know. Just the one word.
Okay, Victoria. There is a word in German. Lebenslager schichtscher Schatz. And the closest translation would be lifelong treasure of destiny. Victoria is wunderbar. But she is not. My Lebenslager schichtscher Schatz. She is my allerlebendste Gegenstand. Wunderbar, but she don't have my allerlebendste Gegenstand. That sounds like we learned in kindergarten. I'm sorry, kindergarten is a German word for.
No, no, I know that one.
But she don't have my allerlebendste Gegenstand. You are mad at me, inconsistent. It means the things that is almost, the things that you want. But it's not quite. That is Victoria to me.
How do you know she's not Lebenslager schichtscher Schatz? I mean, maybe as the years go by, she'll get Lebenslager schichtscher Schatz here.
Lebenslager schichtscher Schatz is not something that develops over time. It's something that happens instantaneously. It courses through you like the water of the river after a storm. Filling you and emptying you all at once. You feel it throughout your body. In your hands. In your heart. In your stomach. In your skin. Because you feel it in your schnackmachen. Pardon my French. Have you ever felt this way about someone?
Yeah, I think so. You have to think about it. You have not felt it. And you're absolutely sure you'll find that someday?
Of course. Everyone does eventually. You just never know when or where.
And he was right. Unfortunately, the when of it was still a little ways down the road. But the where of it?
Okay, thank you very much. So you like that clip?
Absolutely.
You watched it? So that's all the examples of poetic words. Remember poetic words, not weird vocabulary that nobody understand. Of course, there are some reference of German jokes inside, but when it goes to the English, you know, the poetic part starts where the music starts, right? And all he spoke is very simple English, but he combined it into something poetic, something makes you wanna feel wow, those terms are beautiful. So once again, I'll try to give you an example. So Lisa, can you please give me another topic, please?
How about missing somebody?
Then that's easy because it's inside. You get the idea. Okay, I'll try. Missing somebody is easy. Have you missed someone? When you feel, when you missed her, you feel it in your skin, you feel it in your stomach, you feel it in your guts. You feel like like a river after a storm. You feel empty and yet fulfilled all at once. And all you do all day long is to think about her, feel about her. Have you, ladies and gentlemen, do you think that you've ever met such person? And after the answer, you counter as in the movie. If you think about it, you haven't felt it. Yeah, so that's how you, that's how, that's an example of how you conduct the research and how you implement it into your speech. The material can be about everything. It can be about war, can be about peace, can be about fighting racism, can be about everything. But you can use it to all kind of speech. And those are the three principles that I can share to you today. The use of repetition, the use of poetic words, and the use of vivid imaginary. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. You've been a very positive audience. Once again, we should proceed to the Q and A session. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much to our educational speaker. Once again, we are reminded that powerful messages in speech that are delivered gracefully can even move a nation. And we don't even need advanced words. It's just that we need to choose our word carefully and be poetic, right? Our educational speaker. Amazing session that you have there. By the way, we will have Q and A session, so you can just unmute yourself and ask the questions of if you're too shy. But we are Toastmasters anywhere, anyway, so you shouldn't be too shy. So, but anyway, if you would like to type your question to the chat box, you are also allowed to. And also feel free to unmute yourself and ask questions. So the first question?
I'd like to ask.
Yes.
So it is my struggle actually, especially when I make a speech writing. And there is a kind of like, I found the style, but sometimes I get bored about it. So would you help me to like, to kind of if I use this kind of thing, I learned something, especially the repetition, I never use that. And then the poetic words, I never use that. So that's kind of like adding my, adding the style of the speech that I will use. But what if, if I use that and then I get bored? Because it's my problem, especially in speech. It's like, I feel like it's like making a cookie cutter speech. What, how about that?
Oh, oh, sorry, but I think you guys want to see my face again instead of thank you. Oh, welcome back. I'm here. Sorry, sorry, I forgot. So what's the question? Once again, what if you write and you get bored of yourself?
Yeah, so that's the problem. So when I make a speech, I write it, right? And I read it and then I make kind of the architecture of the speech and so on and so on. Everybody likes it and then they kind of giving addition and so on and so forth. But then I kind of, when I deliver my speech again, and then I use that certain techniques and then I
Ah, I see.
bored. And then, yeah, it's like, I, it's like a cookie cutter kind of speech. How, how would you suggest me on that? So that I can still speak with grace, but I don't get bored of myself?
Ah, I see, I see. This is actually a very deep question. So one time I sit by the beach, you know, after the convention, and I speak with Dunston. Anybody of you know Dunston? And then he asked me a very intriguing question. In terms of speaking, what is the difference between an amateur and a professional? Anybody want to give, try to give an answer? You know, this is an open session, pretty much just unmute everyone. Ditan Michael, Nor, you want to say anything? Try, give me an answer. What is the difference between a professional and amateur?
The amateur ones doesn't write, the professional writes, the professional writes. Because I remember when Kwon Yo Young made a speech and then he always said, "You should write the speech."
Alright, the answer is actually very intriguing for me. The answer is an amateur will deliver the speech according to his mood. A professional always deliver the speech not related to the audience. If you are a professional, you give the same speech with the same energy, enthusiasm, and power to one audience or a thousand audience, to a bored audience or to an excited audience, to an audience that understand or you don't understand. So that's like one way to say it. One way to say it is like you are not writing and you are not giving a speech to amuse yourself. But you write and you give a speech as a professional, and at times you have to suppress your feeling. So long it is delivered and so long it's delivered good, that's brilliant. On the other hand, sometimes people goes the other way around. They are too comfortable with their formula with their speech and their speech becomes monotonous. As a member of thirty years, sometimes I've faced this problem myself and I've met people that never change. So personally, my tips is to change the objective of yourself in Toastmasters. Once again, this is the safest place to make mistakes, or this is the place to experiment. And this is personally for me, whenever I give a Toastmaster's speech, it is not my goal to be good. If you see me give a speech outside of the contest, tends to be the quality is very low. My objective to myself is to shock the audience. I don't like when the audience give you an expression was like, wow, that is so good. That's not my goal. My, my goal was to make the audience feel like, what was that? So I make speeches that amuse me. I make speeches about suicide. I make speeches about how to kill someone. So that's how you counter your boredom. Experiment, try something new. And don't impress your audience. Bang them. Make them go, wah! Make them knock out of their seat. And that is, and that is how, after years and years and years, you will always find something new. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
You are welcome. Any other question? Any question? Is everything clear?
Actually, I have a question. So when we actually try to think poetic words, and it doesn't have to be something advanced, but how to make sure that the words can actually move the audience? Because audience has different preferences, right? So how, do you have any tips that, or do you have to experiment those words in the speeches, or how does it usually work?
This one is a bit tricky. And yes, to a certain extent, you need to experiment. But a way to do it is to know your audience. Like, okay, for instance, I guess, and I think I guess correctly, that my audience is quite young. You see, like the audience on my right, most of you are not fifty. And that's how I put a speech. Okay, there's one about Churchill, one about Martin Luther, but there is one about Kung Fu Panda and the other one about how I met your mother. Say if I give this speech, this training, to very senior Toastmasters, everyone is above fifty to seventy, then the material will be different. So yes, although there is an element of trial and error, a good way to start is to put yourself in the audience. You can guess that, or if you are a bit, if you know the audience, if they are your friends, you can like invite few samples and then and then ask them, if I tell you this, will you be inspired? Do you understand? How do you like it? But yeah, um that's so that's the tips, maps your audience, like about their age. Because once again, what I've been sharing to you is actually as as simple as try to take something out of the popular culture. And popular culture can go like, can go anywhere. Like for you, you use Harry Potter reference. And yeah, and so forth, because you know the audience knows Harry Potter. Say you come to another audience and all of them are like, we are like the Japanese Wee Boo. We don't know Harry Potter. We are all like Naruto and Doraimon and Son Goku. You have to adjust. So uh tips is to try to know the audience, imagine your the audience, or even better, spy the audience, take sample of the audience, and yeah, after that, give or take, it's a matter of experiment. Thank you. I hope it helps.
Thank you very much. Such wonderful tip. Any other question from the floor? Feel free to ask. It's just like a discussion. We won't bite. Okay, so no more question?
No more questions?
Or probably the audience want to practice. We still have time though. And then probably our speaker, our educational speaker can actually give feedback and you know, tips for improvement.
That might works.
There is question in the chat box.
Oh, yeah. I read the question. What do you do if the audience are bored or not responding to your speech? What you do is to delete your speech and stop talking. That's what you do. I mean, like, of course, there are an occasion when there's, okay, it's only five minutes left. I get paid already. I don't care. There is one. Finish my speech and then I left. Of course, there are scenarios like that, but most of the time, when they stop listening, you stop speaking. That's it. There are, there are many ways to manage the crowds. And stop speaking is actually one of the strongest, especially in the, like, in the eastern culture. I don't know whether it's works on the west, but in eastern culture is very powerful. Because usually, imagine back too long ago when you are in elementary school, the teacher is describing something, da 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 da, five times stars equals twenty-five, da 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 da, Pangeranipunoguru, Napoleon, da 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 da. And then the whole class goes, wah wah wah, bosh besh. Uh this girl is dating this boy, da 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 da. What the teacher do is usually he just talk, she just talk. And then usually the crowds are stopping the talk by itself. At times when the audience get bored, maybe they want toilet breaks, maybe they are tired. You need to pump up the energy. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, put your hands up in the air. Say, wah, yeah, I'm see it. So this is something in psychology called breaking the trend, breaking the pattern. So a bored audience, a neglectful audience, tends to be bored and neglectful all the time. So you need to break it. What uh, why they are not responding to you, it depends. Once again, it's, it can be as simply as they don't understand. Maybe you talk about being a doctor, about medical stuff, and they, they don't understand a word. You use words that they don't understand. Maybe that's why they are not responding. Another tip is just to ask, like, guys, I I don't get the idea. Like, why you guys like staring at me like this? Why you playing with your phones? Like, did I say something wrong? Maybe they will come say, oh yeah, I don't understand, especially when you're giving a technical speech. So those are my tips. Alright, I think if nobody have more Q and A. If you have question, you can ask me. Or if not, anybody want to like practice about what I've been sharing to you? Anybody want to give a shot? Yes, Lisa, Lita?
Megan?
I don't know. What is it?
You want to start with the you want to start with the theme or you want to start with the quote?
I think quote, it seems easier.
It seems easier, yes. Okay, the quote is something that I really like. Hold on, I need to Google it for a moment. Need to uh speech. I really like it basically because it's actually come from Pokemon. And I really insist to, to say to, you know, if you know Bavashi, he competed last year. Bavashi, you should put this in your speech. And then he was like nah, and I was like ah. Up until this moment, I still very bad about it. But anyway, this is the quotation. Please kindly expand it or use it in one of the speech um that can or cannot uh related to the, to the speech. You can, you can make a speech about sadness or about passion or about anything. The words are I see now that the circumstances of one's birth are irrelevant. And that's what you do with the gift of life that determines who you are. Very deep words, you know. You too, Pokemon mutual strike back.
Would you put it in the chat box? I think, yeah, or, or we are me?
No, so everyone can understand. I see now that the circumstances of one's birth.
Oh my goodness, this is so deep.
Yeah, that's why, guys, watch Pokemon.
In a life where you are born and you feel that you are useless, you need to think, one, what, uh one thing that makes you regret. The first regret I made was when I failed at school. The second regret that I made was when I don't be, um I'm not being really good in my job. The third regret is when I didn't say one thing to my grandfather when he was at the death, uh almost, almost at the death of his body. Uh I remember my grandpa, grandfather what had, had a birthday. It's not a birthday, it's like a whatson. Um and I should say something like feeling thankful to him. But yeah, I think it's, it's the thing that I regret the most. So um if I got the gift of life, I will do something. Because the regret that I've, that I had was when I cannot do, when I cannot do something, when I cannot tell something. And I and I regret that I didn't do that. So do it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, Lita. Nice try. I think I'm in the red, so thank you very much. I think this is the end of my presentation. And and I will uh, I will post you a, a survey monkey. So please kindly fill out the survey to, to make me able to improve myself. But they, I cannot give a comment box, so if you want like to say directly to me in sentences, uh please say it directly. Okay, guys, once again, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much. Give a round of applause, unmute ourselves and give a thunderous applause to our speaker today. Well, I would say that at the session is somewhere that cost you probably more than two hundred thousand outside Toastmasters. And I can see that our speaker today is very professional. Like what he said, it doesn't really matter whether the audience on one audience or hundred of audience. In fact, we only have like around fifteen here, but of course we posted it on YouTube as well. But you know, he share his knowledge, he's being so generous, so I'm really thankful for our educational speaker today. Alright, before we go to the third session or evaluation session, I would like to call for the timer to report on the timing of the speakers, especially for table topic speakers and also the prepared speech speaker. And please report who are eligible. Thank you.
Okay, I actually posted the time taken by the tables topic earlier, but let me try to do that one more time so that you, all of you can see it. Just wait for a moment. Okay, so these are the time taken by each of the speaker, Koiro, Haryadi, Titin and Megan. So all of them falls within the one to two, two minutes, three thirty seconds timeframe, so all of them qualified to be voted as favorite speaker. And then as for the prepared speech, Michael Law takes four minutes, five seconds. So he also fall within the allocated timeframe. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much to our timer. So everybody is eligible to be voted. And we will launch our voting later on after, uh together with the evaluation as well, right, our host? Yes, okay, so we will launch the ballot, the voting later on. Alright, so I would like to give our third session the control to our general evaluator. So the time is yours. Our general evaluator, Toastmasters Jeffrey.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Lisa. Now it's time to evaluate. For the first, we would like to give a total evaluation. Toastmasters, uh, Toastmasters Zara, are you there? Okay, Toastmaster Zara, screen is yours.
Wait a minute. Okay. Um first of all, I proudly say congratulations for finishing your first ever project in this master, this master Michael. I find that it's amazing that you nail this project because as speaking is about telling you to the audience, who are you as a person? And I think you already achieved that goal. You tell us a lot of interesting information about yourself, your interest, um a bit of your life journey and your concerns. Uh your goal that brings you here to make, to meet us in this Toastmaster meeting. And I think that make us to engage to your speech more. Because I believe some of us are thinking just like you. We are taking the same tool. And your speech, I think, has a clear opening, body and ending. And I found that it's amazing since you are new. And also, I like your opening to tell us about the application thing and the fashion. And I think it's very thematic and with after your whole speech really well. And the most importantly, you have clear voice, clear intonation, and you not rush when you speak. And I think that make us able to listen and understand your work easily. And in term of development, uh I want to suggest one thing. And it's about your focus, your eyesight. I think when you speak to our audience, I think it's better to focus your side to audience. So the audience can feel that you are speak to them. And that's all for me. My conclusion is that you are already great. And you can be greater in the future. And once again, Toastmaster Michael, congratulations.
Okay, wow. So, so Toastmaster Zara, it's your first time to be an evaluator. So you uh were delivering your first project in, as an evaluator. So you will be also evaluated by Toastmaster Koiro. So for that, I would like to give Toast five minutes for Toastmaster Koiro to wrap up his uh evaluation to Toastmasters Zara evaluations. So um while we are waiting for that, we can continue to other role seekers. So I will call the Miss Grammarian, Toastmaster Ginny. Toastmaster Ginny, state is yours.
Okay, thank you, G E. Right, um, okay, so with me again as a grammarian, congratulations to all speakers because today I did I noted only slight mistake. All the speakers are great. And you use exquisite words also in your presentation. I love that. And so to, wait. Okay. Uh okay, actually, I want to share something on the screen. Host, can you make me the co-host, make me able to share the screen? Or if not, it's okay. I will I will try to make use of myself today. So, oh, okay, thank you. I noted some exquisite sentences. This one from the speakers today, one from uh, two from the table topics. And the last one from our Edu speaker. You would never be a good speaker if you couldn't be a good writer. So I think that's all for me. Keep up the good work, all the speakers. Back to you, our G E.
Okay, thank you, Miss Grammarian, Toastmaster Ginny. And now we move to the counter. And now we move to the counter, Toastmaster Junida. Toastmaster Junida, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here.
Yeah, please, let us know about your evaluation.
Okay, so now it's my turn, and I will give my report. From, start from Toastmaster Haryadi. Uh, blank, and then Titin blank. And then for Toastmaster Megan, transcript two times, two two, and then a one time. And for Toastmaster Zahara, um, two times. That's all from me. I give back to our G E. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Junida. Also, I think it's quite improved for me, to not say any killer words. So thank you. And now, uh, the timer.
For the timer, uh, for the evaluator, uh, Toastmaster Zahara took two minutes and thirty-five seconds for her evaluation. So that falls within the allocated timeframe.
Okay, so thank you, the timer. And now, um, I will call back to Toastmaster Koiro. Toastmaster Koiro, are you ready for your evaluation?
Yep, a moment.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, when you're ready, screen is yours.
Well, congratulations very much. Uh, congratulations Zahara for accomplishing your very first evaluation project. And I think from, from what I see, from what I observed during your evaluation, that you, you've done a great job in evaluating Michael's very first speech project. Why I did say that you've, uh, been a great evaluator for Michael's speech? As I noticed that you was, uh, you were very detailed, uh, as an evaluator. You finding, you pointed out every single aspects, every single achievement that Michael's done in his very first speech by saying the every positive aspects that he has accomplished as a, as a speaker in his icebreaker, icebreaking project. And, and also, you try to, to focus on one, uh, one, uh, one thing to to be, to be improved for the, for the, for the speaker to be, uh, to consider or to, to try again to, to improve his skill or his, uh, his skill on, on that particular aspect only. So that he can focus on, uh, uh, to, to develop that skill or that aspect in his next project. Instead of bombarding him with several points that he or, uh, that the speaker might, uh, be confused in the, in, in, in using it or definitely begin or improve it for his very next project. And, and also, I noticed that you've, uh, structured your speech by delivering the, the, the positive aspects, the, that the speaker has achieved. And then giving the what aspect that he needs to improve in his next project. And, and again, you wrap it up with, uh, the positive aspects again. And I think it gives a positive impacts to the speaker. Because as I noticed, and also it is as it is written in his, in, in your evaluation project, that your evaluation or evaluation in general needs to be constructive as well as motivating. And I, and I see that you've, you've, uh, you did it great way, uh, uh, you've, you've did, uh, you've done it very well. Because in my experience in evaluating for my very first time, and I was evaluating a nice breaking project, I was so detailed. But the detail that I was giving, uh, that I gave was either, uh, both positive and also a negative aspect that the speaker made during, uh, her speech. But in a way, that makes somehow deep motivation to the speaker. Because I gave lots of backs, a lots of things to, for her to, to improve in her next, uh, in her speech for the next project. But this time, as a very, in, in your very first, uh, speaking, uh, evaluation project, you made a great combination between the positive, the things to improve, and also wrap it up with positive aspect of the speaker's speech. And I see that, uh, by, by doing so, you've accomplished the, uh, the object of your speech. And also, it is, I found, I find it, it will be motivating if I were the, if I were in Michael's position. Because I heard that out of, I've done great, uh, things in my very first speech. And I hope that Michael feels the same way. The next thing that I think you, you can do or improve in your next evaluation, speech evaluation, is that try to balancing out the positive aspect and also the things that speaker needs to improve. For example, you've mentioned two positive achievement the speaker has made. And try to, but also, uh, give the, uh, things to improve to also, to, so to positive and to negative things. So that it is a balance, rather than just, uh, saying many positive things, but only one, uh, aspect to, to improve, especially for an advanced speaker. Because by doing so, you can have, uh, more time to elaborate your points, rather than just mentioning the positive why. So, so that you can have reason why you say that it is positive, why it is, uh, this aspect needs to be improved. But again, still, try to wrap it up in a positive, negative, or I can say things to improve, and wrap it up, close it with the, uh, achievement that the speaker has made in his or her speech. Overall, you've done a great job for your very first time in evaluating, uh, speaker. So I hope that you've learned a lot from this very first experience, and you can be, uh, you can improve yourself as a better speaker and also as a better evaluator. Thank you very much, and I give the control back to G.
Okay, wow, so thank you, Toastmaster Koiro. I believe that Toastmaster Zara will absorb so many positive things from Toastmaster Ero's evaluations. And for the timer, Toastmaster Yama, could you please, uh, tell a bit about the time of Toastmaster Koiro's evaluation?
Master Koiro took five minutes and twenty-nine, uh, second, which exceeds the allocated time. Back to Tom.
Thank you, Toastmaster Yama. Yeah. But this, I, I think it's a great evaluation because I, I also can get so many, uh, insightful, as well as so many, uh, positive things from Toastmaster Koiro, and I think it's so beneficial for Toastmaster Zara to improve, uh, specific in their, in he, in her, uh, evaluation skills. And now, before I give my evaluation, I will, uh, call the ballot counter to vote the best or the favorite table topic speakers. So please, Toastmaster Koiro, to your job. Okay, everyone, please pick, uh, one name that you are, uh, you, that you think you are really admire. Okay, is everyone voted? For that? Well, I will count to five seconds. One, two, three, four, and five. Okay, before this closing. Okay, uh, now it's my turn to, uh, keep my evaluation. So I will, uh, start with the Tom. So, Toastmaster Lisa, uh, I believe that you did a great job today. So please, give a round of applause to Toastmaster Lisa, as a Tom today. Because, uh, one thing that I really love about your way to be a Tom today is that you, uh, created, uh, create opening. You, uh, tried to, uh, explaining about the topics. I think it's a complete explanation about the topic, and also you could, uh, make a visualization of the, of some things that resemble to some role approach, because I think it's a great opening as well, uh, especially, uh, to engage the audience attentions, because it's like a warming up of the meetings. And also for the table topic master, unfortunately, he's gone. I think, I believe that is, uh, a, a creative as well as, uh, inspiring table topic. Because, uh, I love the way she put a question into a screen, and I love the questions that are related to, uh, maybe to our story in life. And also, I really highlight, I really, uh, appreciate to all table topic speakers. Because, uh, most of the table topic speaker, all of the table topic speakers are, uh, able to make, uh, creative, inspiring, as well as motivating, as well as expand, uh, their responses. And I, I believe that table topic is quite challenging, especially for me. And all of the table topic speaker are, were able to expand their responses. I think it's really, really, uh, great. And for the, uh, two speakers, well, I love to add to speakers, uh, to deliver her presentation, uh, because, uh, he also add some movie clips. And I think it's really easy for us to, uh, visualize the idea, especially when we watch a kind of visualized item like a video or even a movie clips. And also, uh, he, uh, giving examples. Uh, he kept a point, uh, for, for some strategies. And, uh, he gave the example of the, in it's of the point. So it's really a, a great, uh, tips and strategies, especially to make a uh, speech more beautifully and more intricately. And I believe that Toastmaster Lisa taught you, because you look so professional. And I think that's why you never, uh, be a winner of any district level contest, because you look so professional. And for the role takers, I really appreciate of your, all of your works today, especially for the grammerian, you explain about the, uh, some grammatical errors, as well as the word of today. And ma- make it into, make, uh, and put it into a screen. I think it's really, uh, easier for us to, uh, know about the word of today. And also for the timer, I love your screens. It's quite clear, and also you can, uh, also you put a like a red, yellow, and green, uh, button light on your screens. It's quite easier for us to, uh, see the lights of your, uh, sign. And also the ballot counter, I think it's kind of so, uh, I really appreciate the counter. Even I couldn't see your appearance today, so thank you for, Toastmaster Junida. And also for the ballot counter, thank you, Waskins. And for overall for today's meeting, I really enjoyed today's meeting. It's, it, it runs smoothly as well as inspiring and motivating. So that's all from me. Thank you. Once again, thanks to Toastmaster Lisa.
Alright, thank you very much to our general evaluator, Jeffrey Potter, for giving such amazing evaluations, very detailed. And I would like to say thank you to all of the role takers today for ma- making this meeting enjoyable. Well, before we close the meeting, I would like to invite someone to present the awards. Are we, is it going to be presented by the ballot counter or the president? Yes? Ballot counter?
Ballot counter.
Alright, ballot counter. So I'd like to invite our Toastmasters Koiro to present the award to our speakers today.
Thank you very much, uh, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Lisa. Very well. So I would like to share my screen to So thank you very much, Toastmaster Chandra, for being the educational speaker in our meeting, in Surabaya Heroes Toastmaster Meeting. Thank you very much. Please give a big round of applause to Toastmaster Chandra.
Alright, thank you. And also, uh, we would like to congratulate also to Toastmaster Michael for successfully delivering his very first speech project, uh, very first speech project, the Ice Breaking Project. Congratulations. Please give a big round of applause to Toastmaster Michael. Also, the, lastly, the, I haven't got the certificate because it's the, just voted, uh, it is voted just now. It is the favorite table topic speaker for so there is a tight battle between two persons. I would give, uh, would say the, if there is a, the honorable mention. Firstly, the honorable mention goes to Toastmaster Lita or Megan Isohia. Congratulations. Please give her a big round of applause. And the favorite table topic speaker voted by the audience here in today's meeting is please give a drum roll. It's me.
Congratulations, Toastmaster. Although you're over time for evaluation, but you can be voted for a table topic.
Thank you. Back to you, uh, Tom.
Alright, thank you very much for everybody who comes to this meeting. And I would like to say congratulations for those who just completed your project, and also Toastmasters Zahara for completing the evaluation project, and all the favorite table, all the favorite speakers for today. And I would like to say thank you very much to our educational session, sorry, speaker today. We learned a lot of things today. And before I, by, by the way, since the closing will be done by the president, so I would like to say thank you for having me today. My name is Sasa Octavia, and I signed off as a Tom. See you next meeting.
Thank you, Toastmaster Lisa. I would like to say thank you once again to our educational speaker, Chandra Adiputra from Bali Toastmasters Club, and also for all fellow Toastmasters that helped us today. Thank you for Toastmaster Nirmala from Polonia, and then Toastmaster Wait, I Toastmaster, uh, we saw our counter, sorry. Oh, she left already. Thank you for, Toastmaster Junita from Cendana, Toastmaster also. And also thank you for Toastmaster Haryadi, Toastmaster Lita, and also Toastmaster Titin. And we have another guest here today, Yuriko, and also Mustika. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations to our newest member, Toastmaster Michael, who already stepped into his journey in Toastmaster. So for next meeting, we'll have meeting on February twenty-eight. Am I right? Wait, sorry.
Yes, twenty-eight, on Sunday.
Twenty-eight, yeah. Twenty-seven. February twenty-seven.
Oh, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Uh, twenty-eight, Madini. It's the joint meeting with
Oh, yeah, sorry. We will have joint meeting with another club on February twenty-eight. So make sure to check our Instagram account for the next So make sure to check our Instagram account for the next information, for further information. And as the president of Surabaya Heroes Toastmasters Club, Club number two-nine, two-eight, one oh five, I close the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Uh, turn on your video. We're going to take picture first. Turn on your video, everyone.
Okay, who is going to take the picture?
Yes.
Jeff? Jeffrey?
What's that? Uh, Jeffrey or Koirol?
Hey, are you ready?
Ready.
One, two, three. One more time. Keep your best smile. One, two, three. Okay, that's great. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming.